I'd like to call to order and convene a public hearing on the 2024-2025 general fund budget. And I will turn it over to Dr. Ross for the 2024-2025 budget overview.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'm going to call our interim CFO, Ms. Marty Rolls, to the lecturing to go over our budget presentation. Ms. Rolls.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Ross, have before you the final, the second and final reading of the 24-25 general fund budget and public hearing. And I want to thank you all for looking over this presentation and helping the administration work on working a realistic plan for next year. All right. So we're looking at the budget calendar again. We are at June 10th for the public hearing, second and final reading. Gone through many different steps to get to where we are today. At this time, the legislature is in recess as far as the budget is concerned, but the conference committee is taking up the unsettled pieces that are still out there. They met last week. They carried over the budget and they elected to conform to funding. So we, they are meeting again tomorrow. I believe it's either tomorrow or Wednesday, so I will be watching that as we get into that point in time. As a reminder, the minimum salary schedule set by the state and the general assemblies with the starting teacher salary with bachelor's degree and zero years of experience at $47,000. That is the same in both versions, the House and the Senate. The funding that has been put into the education funding formula is a little different. The Senate put in $200 million and the House put in $230 million. That is one of the areas that the conference committee is working on. And since the legislature went into recess, the Board of Economic Advisers came out with an additional amount of funding of $142 million recurring and $467 million non-recurring. There will be a 11.8% increase in health insurance that will go into effect January 1, same in both houses, and the bus driver salary increase. There is a discrepancy, the House at 1.5% and the Senate at 2.75%. So we're still waiting to find out where that figure lands. For District 5, things that we needed to consider were the average daily membership from the 135th day, which is how our, how our funding for next year is calculated. We had 16,750 weighted people, or I'm sorry, average daily membership, which equates to 26,574 weighted people units. A small decline from last year, but there again, with the funding formula now being on a percentage basis, gaining students, gaining weighted people units does not guarantee increased revenue. It depends on how every other school district in the state have, if they have grown or if they have declined. So we are a percentage of the whole. This is outlining where we are proposing our teacher's starting salary is. A bachelor's with zero years of experience at $47,500, they would be eligible for the $2,500 NARI stipend. It can either be paid to them directly, or it can be paid to their education servicer for their student loan debt. In addition to this, if teachers that are new to the district sign a contract prior to June 30th, they would be eligible for a $500 signing bonus. And don't forget the retention bonus that has traditionally been paid in November to staff members. That would give them a potential of $51,500 as a first-year teacher. Items also to consider in this budget are the potential salary and benefit increases, like we talked about with the salary schedule going up. That equates to about a $1.45 million increase. That is the schedule plus a step for each member that, each staff member that is on the teacher salary schedule. The health insurance equates that 11.8% increase in January, equates to 3, 1.3 million. There is a 2% increase in a step for support staff, and we added year 22 to the schedule. A 2% increase plus a step for the administrators and on the administrative schedule. All the FICA related to those increases and the bus driver salary schedule increase, all of those together combined are approximately $5.79 million. In addition to those increases, we are asking to increase days for AAPs at three schools and APs at three schools, the AAPs from 190 to 210 days and the APs from 190 to 215 days. That, based on the daily rates that we currently have in those positions, would be approximately $65,000 with salary and benefits. As we all know, the SR3 funding will expire on September 30th. To continue the positions that are currently being funded through the SR3 funding, we're looking at nine clinical counselors, one nurse, one nursing support assistant, one youth engagement counselor, one behavior program leader, and one social worker, and that is approximately $1.2 million in salary and benefits on an annual basis. And the programs that, and the supplemental pay that go along with the SR3 would be $525,000. Understand that these two categories would be brought to the board annually for approval. So when you approve them in this budget, you're approving it for one year, continuing it through this time next year. We have one position for $165,000 salary and benefits that we're asking to add to the budget. It would be in the community support position. And then the additional considerations would be the NARI program, the First Jobs Program, obviously increases in utilities and energy supplies and services with inflation. We're seeing rising costs in all of those areas. Looking to repurpose at HR FTE as a benefit specialist 2, which would be an additional $15,000 salary and benefits. Reclassing 21 FTEs as recommended by the Evergreen Salary Study. These would be individuals that were in the category documented as below market minimum, and that cost would be $98,000 with salary and benefits. And we're looking to increase two teaching FTEs. One is a .8 to a 1.0, and one is a .9 to a 1.0, and the cost of that would be approximately $22,000. In addition to those increases in the budget, the administration is requesting that you consider doing a fund balance assignment for portables. This was in the budget for the 23-24 year, and when the solicitation was issued, there were no respondents based on timing and the need of the time constraints on delivery. So there is a request to continue this as a fund balance assignment. It is not part of the $240 million. It would be in addition to that using fund balance dollars. As we have discovered since I last came to you, there may be a need to purchase up to three portable classrooms for next school year. There again, if we put the solicitation out now, we would have additional time for delivery of those before school starts. And there would, there is a potential need for more portable classrooms in the future as we work towards the rezoning and referendum plans, should those become a reality. All right. So when we look at the local revenues, we're looking at our taxes, our state revenues, and our other financing sources, and there is an increase to $240,1236. That's the revenue number for the entire revenue sources for the general fund. It's a 3.48% increase over last year. While the funding formula funds the 75-25 split, where 75% of the funding comes from the state and 25% of the funding would come from local sources, based on that index of taxpaying ability as provided by the Department of Revenue, we realize a 36% local share with a 64% state share. In addition, the expenditures that are anticipated, you see some growth in expenditures in certain lines and decreases in other lines. So you'll see that the salary and the fringe line was a large increase this year over last year, and that was based on the information that I just provided to you with the different positions that would need to be added to the general fund and other increases, for instance, the health insurance and the teacher salary schedules and the other schedules. The 1.48 million decrease in equipment would be because the portables will not be in the budget next year. Whenever we were looking at the breakdown of expenditures and increases, I wanted to make sure that you all had all the information that I could provide to you. One thing that I think that is a little deceiving is when we look at things that directly impact students, guidance counselors, media assistants, career specialists, all those are categorized as support services in our budget. So those would be in a category not directly rated, related to instruction, but they directly impact students every day. So when you're looking at the breakdown of the increases, it's really more telling to be at the 78.6% increase on instruction and what directly impacts the students every day, and then the 21% in administration, people in my, in my department, people in human resources, the technology, those areas, we support instruction. But the media assistants, transportation, social workers, they directly impact, impact instruction on a daily basis. So I wanted to give you that breakdown, just so you could see the difference in that based on what each category represents versus what the account number is, because I think that it makes it a little bit deceiving when you look at it strictly by account numbers. Any question on that? Because that is a new slide for you all, and I just want to make sure that you all had an understanding of that slide. All right. When we look at the millage rate cap for this year, based on the Consumer Price Index and population growth, we are allowed to increase 5.76%. And when you calculate that increase of the 266 mills that are currently assessed and levied through District 5, it's a 15.32 mill cap for the 24-25 year. When we look at the lookback mills, as is allowed by the law, there are 30.01 mills that have not been used in the past three years that would be available to increase operating taxes if that was the will of the board, for a total of 45.33 mills maximum increase of millage for this year. The impact of that would be approximately $408 on a $150,000 piece of property that is not owner, homeowner occupied. It is not residential property. It is investment property. It could be a rental home. It could be a business. It could be lots of things, but it is not a homeowner property. So all those 45.3 mills would generate approximately $13,783,000. Then the cost would be $408 annually, based on a value of $150,000. I wanted to go over briefly the fund balance policy, as is the board policy in DFAB. One thing I want to make sure we point out and read, that bolded sentence that the fund balance should not be used for recurring budget needs. Obviously, "should" is a permissive word. However, the fund balance is, is one-time money. It is not something that is available every year. If you use 3 million of it this year, and you spend that on something that you're going to have that $3 million cost next year, you know, how do you, how do you cover that cost next year? Do you go back into the fund balance for another 3 million? That would be something that you all would decide, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention based on the board policy. And the, also in the board policy, it is dictated that the fund balance should generally be between 15 and 18%, which gives you about two months' worth of funding should something catastrophic happen. So when we look at fund balance on June 30, 2033, and remember, this, it's a snapshot in time. It is that day. July 1st, it would have looked completely different. It is just that day. That day, the pre-pays were 3.6 million. So that's, that is money that has already been spent. It is not cash in the account. And fund balance and cash aren't the same thing. So I, we didn't have 56,000 or $56 million in the bank that day. That was the fund balance that day. So these were the assignments that the board had approved at that time as published in the annual financial report, based on the construction and the retention increases, incentives, and potential expenditures that were necessary at that time. So as we are projecting and looking at the fund balance for June 30, 2024, there's an estimated 4 million in prepaid items inventory, something that you can't, it's not spendable. That's a forecast based on what I've seen over the last several years. Requesting an assignment of $3,211,334 to cover employee retention incentives for this coming November. That would include the FICA on the employee side, so that has been grossed up, and that is based on 2,720 FTEs. The portable classrooms, asking for the $1.5 million assignment for that, so that we can have those funds available as the need arises for portable classrooms in the upcoming year. The fund balance assignments that you have already approved are the future potential capital expenditures of 3.5 million and 66 FTEs in critical needs areas. The critical needs areas, the amount has been updated based on the salary schedule for the 24-25 school year. That would leave an unassigned fund balance of $41,464,541, which puts you at 17.27% of the next year's budget. And with that, you are in the range based on your board policy. And Dr. Ross?
Thank you, Ms. Rolls. At this point, I'm going to talk a little bit about our salary study and its implications in terms of the raises that were proposed for this year. If you remember, on April 14, 2023, we presented the compensation and classification study by Evergreen. Being informed, we managed four salary schedules, one for bus drivers, one for our support staff, one for admin, and one for our teachers. That's the certified. If we look at the work we have done over the last two years and look at the results of the salary study, you can see that in terms of the increases, we have met the recommendations of that salary schedule. There are some that we have put in this budget in terms of meeting the minimum on our, on our existing scales that we're addressing as well. So I just wanted to show the work that we're doing to meet those average increases of raising those salary scales for teachers, for staff, for bus drivers, and for our administrators. What's important to understand as we look at different salary scales for teachers across the state is that they're not all designed and built the same. We talk about the state scale, which has, goes on five lanes from bachelor's to doctorate. It goes, it stops at the 28th year. So if you have 33 years in the system, you're paid at the 28th year rate. Our system goes to 33 years. So we have 34 different levels on ours for a total of 170 sales that we're financing, that we're funding. And where the state only has 145 sales, you know, ideally, our goal is to ensure that every year that you work in our system, you get paid more. You get a recognition in terms of financial increase for the number of years that you're with us, as well as the education that you've attained. And so theoretically, we would like to see a state salary scale that would run in this form. And then we could have a uniform rate of increase above it, and that would allow us to meet that objective. But here's the reality of the state salary scale. It moves this way. And so trying to have a standard rate of increase above a line that does not move at a standard rate of, of slope becomes very difficult. If you look at the dollar values, you can see that there's just this huge inconsistency in between the years 0 through 4, what happens in the fifth year and how it just flattens out. And so our goal was to ensure that we didn't just address the sales that we had to address, that we addressed all of the sales to ensure that every teacher in our, our district could enjoy a raise. So as, as Rolls specified, if we only did what the state required of the 170 sales that we, we have to fund, we only had to touch 22 of them. If we did a standard rate of increase over the state minimum, you can see how many sales and rate would have actually taken a decrease in pay. And so our goal was to ensure every teacher in this district received a raise. And so with this proposal, it is an average of 6% raise across the, all of the 170 sales that we are proposing. So this is something we're able to do without increasing the millage rate or going to fund balance to accomplish. So, Ms. Rolls?
So we talked about the fact that the conference committee still had some work to do. There may be additional revenues coming in from the state's side, especially based on the Board of Economic Advisers report at the end of May. So these are potential items that you would be able to address through a budget amendment. You could review your teacher and support staff salaries, determine if you wanted to give any additional increases. You would be able to monitor where your academic needs are. Maybe there's students that need more individualized learning. You may be able to put some more tutors on the, on the pay, pay scale. You may be able to do some additional temporary help where you could have, the students would have more individualized attention to increase their achievement scores and/or MAP testing. Another item that you will need to address would be the summer planning days and the PD days for next summer. The teachers have become accustomed to those over the last couple of years. That's not included in the budget that I provided to you. So that may be an area that you will need to address for next, next summer, this time next year. So these are items that I have identified that may need some attention with any additional revenues that you receive. Upcoming dates to remember, we have made it through the legislative session. We've made it through Sani-Dai. We've done the first reading. We are here now tonight to do the second and final reading to approve the budget. The governor still has not signed the budget. He has not been provided the budget. So we're asking you to do something before we know what the final total will be. But what we have provided you is the most conservative. It could only get better from here, from a revenue perspective. It, there will be, I feel, I could stand here with 100% certainty and tell you, there's going to be additional revenues more than what have been provided in this budget on the state's side. Those would need to be budgeted at a later date. So our recommendation is here. We would ask that you approve this budget, approve the assignments that were detailed, and there would be no increase in the operating millage rate or the debt service millage rate. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Rolls? Mr. Satterfield?
I have a comment and a question. First, I liked all your ideas. We've talked several times amongst ourselves about the idea of, would it be great to have those extra staff to meet the needs of some of our students who need the most help. Unfortunately, our numbers, just recruiting, if you know where those teachers are, I'd like to, you know, if you could, before you leave tonight, leave their addresses. Mr. Wicker, are we, are we, and I don't want to put you on the spot, are we, we're still shy certified staff?
Mr. Satterfield, we are right now at a good place with, with certified.
You don't have to give me a number.
But we, but we still have work to do. We still have work to be done.
And, and one other thing I wanted to kind of point out is, and correct me if I'm wrong, state funding for teachers, it's based on 35 kids in a classroom, correct? And Dr. Ross?
Yeah. So we're, we're, we're going to maintain our district, not going over 25. And I say as best, in some cases, we know that's, is tough, but we are funding more teachers than the state with a lot. So that is more on our local side to pick up. So I feel very confident in, in our ability to maintain that with this budget.
Well, and the reason I bring that up is I've talked over the years with, we have meetings with principals, meetings and district meetings and things, and there are some of the nearby districts that are, do have classes of upwards around 35 kids. And when you have a, especially if you have a struggling class, as you were referring to, five kids makes a huge difference. I could not imagine having an extra 10 kids in a class. And a lot of our classes that we have with our struggling students, we try to keep them down below 20 if possible because of the needs. But that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Pottle?
How did you arrive at the 69.5 mills for the debt service millage?
That would be based on the millage that's outstanding, that needs, that will need to be serviced next year, and based on the, the issuance that I'm going to provide to you later tonight.
Okay. So last year, we had about, I think, $22.5 million in the reserve fund for debt service millage, and we had a pretty lengthy discussion about, I thought that was too much, and everybody said, no, it's not too much. What is, what's the appropriate amount of fund balance to keep in your debt service millage, in your fund balance?
You know, I think you have to be prepared for anything that could happen with taxes not coming in as you anticipate them. I think that, and when we talked about it, we were looking at around the eight to nine million would, would be what would need to be in there to cover that. Like I said, if we, if we look at this bond issuance presentation later tonight, I'll show you how we are going to be able to not only provide for capital needs that the district does not have funding appropriated for already, but it will also bring the fund balance for the sinking fund at the county. When it, when that sinking fund services the debt that we would issue, it would bring the sinking fund down to a level that would be more manageable and more in line with where it needs to be.
So do you have a rule of thumb as far as percentage of outstanding debt or number of months? No rule of thumb for what the sinking fund balance should be?
There again, I think it has to be based on the debt and what you have coming in for the next year, what the value of the mill is for the next year. So.
Does the 69.5 assume that this fund balance will stay the same, go down, or grow?
It should go down next year if you all, if you all decide to issue the 15 million that I'm going to propose later tonight, it would go down.
This is for this budget, right? The 69.5 is, is just for the budget we're talking about right now?
Well, the 69.5 would be for your debt, so it would not be in necessarily this budget. It would be setting the millage rate for the debt service, and so that would not be in this budget here, no ma'am.
So you're saying the 69.5 assumes we're going to issue additional debt, the 15 million?
The 69.5 does not have, is not contingent on the 15 million additional debt. Bringing the sinking fund down into an area that the Lexington County Auditor would feel would be sufficient to cover the debt service, the 15 million would be what we would need to do to do that.
I guess I'm confused. So the 15 million's a whole nother subject. We haven't voted on it yet. Tonight, we're, right now, we're talking about this budget.
Yes, ma'am.
For this budget, you're saying we need 69.5 mills?
Not for this budget, no ma'am. The 266 mills are what we need for this budget.
Okay. So the 69.5 is really separate matter from this budget?
It is a separate matter from this budget, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Isn't that the, the debt service, like, that's the capital budget, not the general fund?
That's the, that is the debt service. It is the money that is received to service your debt that is outstanding.
Any more questions?
I have a question, just because, you know, I think a lot of people don't understand when they, like, so you made a comment that this is a very conservative budget, and that it is very likely that we will get more money than what we are anticipating right now from the state, than what's included in the state budget.
Yes.
So we're actually going to receive more money than what we have right in front of us?
Yes, ma'am. You have the potential to.
So, and you said that you are fairly confident that we are going to receive more money than what is in this budget. So there's been a lot of conversation about teacher salaries. We've gotten emails from teachers. There's been people talking about that. from teachers, there's been people talking about that. Why are we not including that in the teacher salary discussion to pay teachers more? I mean, I'm asking, because we get asked that question, and so if we're being very conservative, and typically, I mean, I haven't seen it where, you know, I've been on the board four years, I haven't necessarily seen where we haven't received the money that we said that we were going to get. I'm not saying that that's not possible, but, I mean, I don't know that the state's necessarily, there's a big push right now to make sure we pay teachers more, and we put more money into education, so I'm not sure that they're going to cut money from us. Maybe they will, I mean, that's, I mean, I don't know, but I'm trying to be able to explain it to folks that reach out to say, well, we're not paying as much as a neighboring district, even though we are, it just, we have it arranged differently. I mean, we are paying our teachers competitively, based off of this, I mean, if you can make $51,500, I mean, that's more than what the state minimum is, it's just not in a conventional way, because we're trying to, I mean, I'm assuming the administration is trying to be, you know, clever about that, and I don't think that's a bad thing, I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm just trying to explain, when you hear a comment, like, we're going to make, we're going to have more money than this, while we're also saying, are we paying our teachers enough? Because I take it personally when you say we're not giving money to teachers, because we are.
We are giving money to teachers.
So, I mean, I feel like that's some, I'm trying to figure out how to explain that to myself, sorry.
If I can take a shot at it. So that decision rests with me, we talk about, you know, what numbers to take to the board. It is my rule of thumb to wait till you have it in hand, before we distribute it. If we don't have it, and we're paying with money that we don't have, I get very nervous about that. So I'd rather take what we have, the most conservative view, we can't get any less than this, and then a budget amendment reassess. I would say, though, I would challenge anyone that could find a district paying our teachers more in the route that we're doing. We're not asking for tax raises, we're not using debt fund balance to do it. We're doing it with the revenue that we're receiving, giving an average of 6% to all of our teachers. With incentive packages, some of our teachers are getting over 10%. So I feel very confident in our scale, and where we are, we're out first with ours, but we're not using savings or debt, or fund balance, and we're not raising millage. The other thing, I think, is a great point you brought up, is that there are other classes who are not mandated to raise, our support staff. If there's one group that I think we would really need to retouch at budget amendment, is the support staff. And for a lot of them, they make the lowest amount of anyone in the district. So I would ask that, at budget amendment time, the money is in hand, we would know exactly how much we have, and that we prioritize that group as well.
Mr. Satterfield?
The way we're wrapped around, I'm not sure you can see. At what point in time would, could we have a budget amendment? When would we know those numbers?
You could potentially know the numbers beginning of July, but I would recommend to get farther down the road into the fall, maybe October timeframe, when you have a good idea of what your fund balance is, where it ended, I'm working off of projections, obviously. And to answer Ms. Hines' questions, I agree with Dr. Ross, I don't have a piece of paper that I can hand you and say, this is how much money we're going to get, and I can't, I can stand here and say, I believe 100% we're going to get it, and tomorrow, something devastating could happen, and it doesn't. If things continue the way we're going, yes, I'm 100%, but on March 16 of 2021, I never thought we would be out of school for three months. I mean, I don't know what tomorrow is, but everything staying the same, yes, I do think we, without a shadow of a doubt, that we will have additional revenues.
And my second question, excuse me, Ms. Hines, is if the referendum does not pass, how would that affect any of this?
That does not affect the general fund budget.
I was just thinking about staffing, and, I mean, I was referring to Dr. Ross, any other staffing issues that we might run into because of?
That's one of the things we're going to talk about tonight, to kind of get some direction, we would like to start having these conversations with the board. We do know we have to operate, and it'll be different from the five-year plan, so we're going to set us out apart tonight in discussion to that very question.
Anyone else for purposes of the budget hearing discussion? All right, thank you, Ms. Rawls. That brings us to the public participation for the public hearing, and I believe we have a speaker?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair, we've got one, it's Kim Murphy, and she's here to speak about budget and taxation.
All right, and just for purposes of the meeting, we follow, we encourage public participation, we respectfully ask you adhere to procedures provided in board policy, BEDH, public participation at meetings, your comments should be limited to three minutes, and must remain on topic for this public hearing, the general fund budget. And questions asked during public participation will be handled in accordance to board policy. Ms. Murphy?
Thank you, good evening. It's very discouraging that, year after year, the district presents a line-item budget with costs that they say are needed to pay our teachers and operate our schools. There is a public hearing on this budget, like tonight, and then two readings to show the tax that you will need to collect from taxpayers. But year after year, you always end up, and I don't know that the board members know this, you always end up collecting more tax dollars than you need to cover those costs. It's put in fund balance. I think it's clear that it is known, when the budget is created, that you're going to end up with extra money. The expenses are overstated in the budget, and revenue is understated. The net result is that taxpayers are being overtaxed, and the fund balance is increasing by the millions, and this is every year. Then that extra tax money that's in fund balance, that you collected under the guise of paying teachers and operating schools, according to the budget that was approved, is used to buy land or construction projects that were never part of the operations budget that was presented to the public. There's no reason to have increased the millage rate previously, because that millage rate already brought in, the original millage rate already brought in more money than you needed. Now that it has been increased, you're guaranteed to have even more additional money. Even though you're not raising it this year, you don't have to, because you raised it so much the year before, you don't have to collect it, you don't have to raise it, you're going to end up with more money. Again, year after year, taxpayers are being overtaxed. You say that the money in fund balance can't be used for reoccurring expenses to operate your schools, but is it right to use this money on construction projects that are reoccurring? Because the millage, excuse me, it's reoccurring every year that you earmark this money on something other than paying our teachers. Don't you think it's disingenuous to do this? Instead of construction, why not pay our teachers? I've got one more question. If the referendum passes, how much will the operation budget increase? The resolution has been approved to hold a referendum in November, but there's been no discussion on the cost of these projects, how much they're going to cost to operate, how much they're going to cost to maintain. Hopefully, you'll do that before the November referendum, thank you.
And that brings us to the end of our public hearing, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing of the 2024-2025 general fund budget.
Do I have a second? I have a second from his Snipes, all in favor, that motion carries seven to zero.